Good evening. Today is Monday, December 17th, 2018. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join us for the opening ceremony, the presentation of colors by J.M. Robinson High School, and the National Anthem by Bethel Elementary School. Please rise. Right, pace. Forward, march. Let's give a round of applause for all of our students tonight. And thank you to all the parents and other family members for bringing the children tonight. We appreciate it. We'll just wait a moment until our guests leave. So you may have noticed that there's someone different to my left tonight. We welcome Deputy Superintendent Lynn Reimer to join us in the superintendent's chair this evening. Dr. Ladder is out of town. We'll start with adopting the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved.
Second.
So Barry, Mr. Schumaker, and Mr. Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's seven zero. We'll start with our recognitions this evening with the Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month, Mrs. Glenda Jones. And Ms. Reimer will cover that, I believe, tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Mr. Vaughn's not able to be with us this evening, but as always, we want to offer our sincere thanks and gratitude to him and to the Hilbisch Ford team for sponsoring this teacher recognition program. Tonight, we will honor our Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for December, Ms. Hannah Clark. Ms. Clark, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. Hannah Clark is a third grade teacher at Carl A...whoops. Great entrance, okay. Hannah Clark is a third grade teacher at Carl A. Fur Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "Ms. Clark is a wonderful teacher who takes a personal interest in her students. Each time I have contacted her about my daughter with a question or concern, I can tell that she truly values my concern and takes the time to problem-solve with me. She also is innovative with her teaching techniques. My daughter loves going to school each day and has taken an interest in all," and those as capital "ALL," "subject areas due to Ms. Clark's energy and enthusiasm. Each day, she comes home and reteaches the day's lessons, just like Ms. Clark, with spunk, joy, and a smile on her face. I can't tell you how much it means to me to know that she goes to school each day to a teacher who not only has the expertise, but also has a genuine joy for teaching." Ms. Clark, thank you for bringing such contagious joy, energy, and enthusiasm to your classroom each day, and congratulations on your selection as the Teacher of the Month for Hilbisch Ford. Now, please allow, well, Ms. Reimer's already giving you, you're presenting you with your awards, so we're going to ask that you go through and let the board members shake all of your hands. Just turn and come down here and start at this end, and congratulations.
And next, we'll have the Impact Through Education Awards. Mrs. Ronnie Boone will come up to present those.
Good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Pitt School Road Elementary School and Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College High School. Our Impact Awards are made possible thanks to the generosity of AXA Advisors. And Mr. Sloan and Mr. Caspar from AXA Advisors weren't able to join us this evening, but we do want to say thank you to them for the sponsorship and for their continued support of our school system. Now, on to tonight's awards. First up is Pitt School Road Elementary School, and I'd like to have any members of the Pitt School Road Elementary School Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Pitt School Road Elementary this evening is Mason Bonaparte. Would Mason and his family please come forward? Mason exemplifies so much of what Pitt School Road Elementary School strives for. He is a student who always puts his best out there for others to see. In the classroom, he is focused, diligent, and committed. With his peers, he is humble, compassionate, caring, and inclusive. In every adult interaction, he is genuinely kind, respectful, and engaging. He cares about others around him being able to succeed. This is true in the classroom, hallways, and at recess. He's quick to keep an eye out for other students and seeks to help and support them in any way. He knows the right choice in every situation. He embraces the school's PBIS focus as someone who is always safe, respectful, and responsible. Principal Smith says, "I am personally greeted," I am always personally greeted with a follow-up question from Mason when I engage him in conversation. If I tell him to have a great day, he will respond with, "I hope you do too, Mr. Smith." He always has a smile on his face and is ready to embrace the opportunities that each day may bring. I cannot say enough kind words about Mason and his daily actions and attitude. I am so proud to call him a Pitt School Road Panther." Congratulations, Mason. Our next honoree from Pitt School Road Elementary School is Ninale Gonzalez Cruz. Would Ninale and her family please come forward? Ninale is a joy. She is a quiet leader who sets an example with her attitude and acts of service. She has an infectious smile and a heart that is a mile long. As a peer helper, Ninale volunteers in a variety of roles and always uses that opportunity to make maximum impact. She always leaves the person or situation in a better place than she found it. As a student, she is able to persevere and stay committed to her work and the task at hand so that her learning stays a top priority. Her kind heart and spirit allow her to see the best in others and appreciate their differences and their abilities. She makes Pitt School Road Elementary School a better place. Principal Smith says, "I have been blessed to serve as her principal and watch her grow into an extraordinary young lady." Congratulations, Ninale. Our next honoree from Pitt School Road Elementary School is Mrs. Erica Curran. Would Mrs. Curran and her family please come forward? Mrs. Erica Curran is a dedicated and amazing teacher. It is not only what she does, but how she does it. She works tirelessly to ensure her classroom is ready each and every day to support her students fully academically, socially, and emotionally. Her approach is always calm, clear, and consistent. The reason Mrs. Curran was chosen as the recipient of this award, however, is that she not only is able to do this in her classroom every day, but she also makes an extraordinary school-wide impact. She applied for a $1,500 garden grant to impact the school, and it turned into a $20,000 endeavor that completely created the most wonderful opportunities for all the students at the school. She's so quick to share ideas with her grade level and with the school. She had an idea about creating a "There's Only One You" rock garden and personally oversaw the donation of more than 1,000 rocks and developed a partnership with the school's art teacher so that students could each paint and personalize their rocks. Now, the school has a new centerpiece for the car rider line. Mrs. Curran impacts the school's instruction as well. She has researched numerous new technology ideas to engage and challenge students and is always willing to walk step by step with anyone through an idea that may help children. The Pitt School Road Elementary School mission is to make school feel like home for all students, staff, and families. Mrs. Curran is an integral piece of the Pitt School Road School family. She sets an example in her attitude, actions, words, and care for everyone. She is completely deserving of this honor. Her impact on Pitt School Road Elementary School cannot be measured. Principal Smith says, "I am blessed to work beside her each and every day to change lives together." Congratulations, Mrs. Curran. And our final honoree this evening from Pitt School Road Elementary School is Ms. Dana Peterlin. Would Ms. Peterlin and her family please come forward? What Dana does for Pitt School Road Elementary, its staff, and students cannot be described in words. Every good team has a glue person. This person helps hold everything together and makes everything work. This is what Dana is to Pitt School Road Elementary. She helps take the big ideas and follows through with the details to make them a reality. She is a wonderful financial secretary, but she is so much more to the school. She fills a variety of roles and makes them all look easy. It doesn't matter if the task is in her job description or not. She's always willing to step in and help in every way. Not only does she step in to help in every possible way, but she does so with passion, commitment, and care. She is able to see that every act, no matter how small, can make a huge impact on others. Principal Smith says, "I never doubt that Dana will always strive to make our school the best place to work and learn and be on the front lines to help us hold it all together." Congratulations, Dana. And now for the Impact Through Education Awards for the Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College High School. I'd like to invite any members of the ECHS Administrative Team to please come forward at this time. Our first honoree tonight is Robbie Messick. Would Robbie and his family please come forward? Robbie is a senior at the Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College and has represented the school in every facet of early college life during his tenure. In addition to being an honor student with a cumulative 3.8 grade point average, Robbie has been recognized by Rowan Cabarrus Community College for earning President's List Distinction. He represents the school in various athletic competitions as well, having helped lead the flag football team to back-to-back Fish Bowl Tournament Championships in 2017 and 2018. Robbie was also an instrumental leader and founding member of the school's Model UN Club, which has earned state recognition in only its first two years of existence. He also serves as a Sherpa, which is a guide and instructor for the summer orientation camp for rising freshmen. Robbie shared that one of his best memories from early college was being able to see the freshmen transition from being nervous with one another to bonding with each other by the end of the orientation week. This year, Robbie was also elected Homecoming King. He plans to attend a four-year college this fall to study business and pursue a career in politics. He simply embodies everything that's great about the Early College and is such a great role model for all, which makes him a deserving recipient of this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations, Robbie. Our next honoree from the Early College is Alexis Curtis. Would Alexis and her family please come forward? There are so many wonderful things to say about Alexis Curtis, from her humble spirit and kind, helpful nature, to her innate ability to quietly corral a large group of freshmen together to work on solving quadratic equations when it isn't for a grade, when they don't have to, and when she obviously isn't their teacher. Alexis Curtis is a do-anything, handle-it-all kind of kid. As a junior at the Early College, Alexis holds down a 4.5 grade point average and is currently in the top five of a very strong junior class. She volunteers relentlessly in any way she is needed, helping even those students who don't often ask for help. She just sees that they need it, and there goes Alexis to the rescue. Alexis provides leadership in many forms, guiding and advising freshmen on how to stay on top of their studies and offer them help to get organized and on track, or encouraging them when she sees the potential in them that they don't see in themselves. She makes it clear that she won't let them give up on this great opportunity without helping them. Alexis just flat-out cares about people and their well-being, especially her peers. She is often seen doing what she doesn't have to do. She simply has it in her heart to do it. When Alexis chooses to do whatever Alexis chooses to do, it is clear that she will be lifting her fellow man up as she leads, and she will set the best example for us all to follow. This is why she is deserving of the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations, Alexis. Our next honoree from the Early College High School is Ms. Ann Zaski. Would Ms. Zaski and her family please come forward? Ann Zaski, or as she is affectionately known by her colleagues, Annie, is the quintessential rah-rah, yay-you, yay-us, yay-early-college type of teacher. Ms. Zaski is a positive force within the Eagle family who is always seeking ways to help the team reach its goals by helping students challenge themselves academically and interpersonally, as well as supporting early college activities that help students and staff feel more like a family. Ms. Zaski stepped up to the plate and led the students outside the classroom as well. She took on leading the student body and hosting the prom and the school's summer camp discovery. Prom is a huge undertaking in and of itself, but camp discovery takes days to plan and then days to train the Sherpas, the student Sherpas, who lead the camp. Ms. Zaski took on these tasks happily and did an outstanding job in both instances. One of her students said, "Ms. Zaski makes Math III and pre-Cal classes fun almost every day by giving time to students to share funky math puns and by allowing students to create math toolkits to use as they study and apply math formulas. On any given day, you may see her dancing as she facilitates students working through the math problems with their table partners." And a colleague said, "I was very proud to see Annie grow in her own instruction throughout the year as she led the staff in activities and discussions as they worked toward the collective goal of AIG endorsement certification." Principal Black says, "We appreciate Ms. Zaski, and we are honored to have her on our team." Congratulations. And our final honoree this evening from the Early College is Ms. Ruby Nesbit. Would Ms. Nesbit and her family please come forward? As a principal, it's of paramount importance that you surround yourself with staff members who are smarter than you and who share your vision for your school. These good people also carry out the overall mission of your school, just as you would. There are examples of staff members who do exactly that, and then there are a few select who take this responsibility way too far, but in a good way. At the Early College, that person is lovingly known as Ruby Nesbit. Ruby is the official treasurer and data manager. Ruby is the official treasurer and data manager for the Early College. However, she is called upon to fulfill many, many roles. Ruby is a mother hen to all the Early College students and staff members. If you look like you're having a bad day, she's the shoulder to cry on or lean on, a caring confidant that will encourage you to keep pressing on. If you are sick, Ruby has a Grey's Anatomy medical degree and she is quick to reference it as she patches kids and adults up on a daily basis. Ruby is also the overall staff rule enforcer. For example, if you don't turn in money or grades on time, you are not allowed to partake in staff socials, eat her homemade lasagna, receive her personalized bitmoji gifts, watch her perform Belle Bib Devos' Poison at staff retreats, and you are excommunicated from her funny staff group texts. Life would be pointless, meaningless, flavorless without a Ruby Nesbit. Principal Black says, "She is the Pied Piper for staff and students alike, a loving, funny presence for the entire ECHS family. She is the paprika on our deviled egg of life and nothing at the Early College would be as special without her." This is why she is deserving of the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations Ms. Nesbit.
Well, we're going to move on to the last recognition of the evening. Number 4.03, North Carolina School Board Association Training Hour Recognition. Would Lynn Reimer and Barry Schumaker go to the podium, please?
Good evening. It is my honor to recognize our board members who have excelled in growth opportunities. A major goal of the North Carolina School Board Association is to provide growth opportunities for school board members. The North Carolina School Board Association strives to offer board members up-to-date and relevant educational training opportunities. Since its inception in 1985, the Academy for School Boardmanship has provided an avenue for board members to develop skills and knowledge to carry out the task of leading the state's school districts. Board members must earn 30 hours of training annually, approved by the local board and reviewed by NCSBA. Once this minimum requirement has been met, annual recognition will be given for those that continue to earn hours. The following board members are being recognized by the North Carolina School Board Association for the 2017-2018 academic school year. Mr. David Harrison will receive a certificate of achievement, which is between 101 hours and 200 hours. Mr. Harrison had 195 hours this year. Congratulations, Mr. Harrison. Board Chair Ms. Cindy Furtinball will receive an award of excellence. That is for 301 hours to 400 hours. Ms. Furtinball has completed 355 hours. Congratulations, Ms. Furtinball. And Ms. Carolyn Carpenter will receive a silver award between 701 to 800 hours. Ms. Carpenter has completed 754 hours. Congratulations, Mrs. Carpenter. And Dr. Lauter wanted to say congratulations and thank you for all that you do.
Well, I'm sure we all appreciate, I'll say, getting that recognition. It seems to rotate when we hit the next mark. But we've never been able to have our certificates presented by a member of the Board of Directors of the North Carolina School Board Association before, so, thank you, Mr. Schumaker.
It's an honor to do it. Especially Ms. Carpenter, I mean, she's like outpacing everyone. Eight hundred hours!
I'll be at the top level next year. I don't think you'll any bother. I'll have it.
Well, eight hundred hours is almost half a year worth of education. I mean, like, that's a lot of work.
Okay, board members, we are now ready to move on to the approval of minutes. We have the minutes before us for November 5th and November 19th. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's removed.
Second?
Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any discussion, commentary? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 7-0. We'll now move down to number six for reports. And I'm actually, would like to wish everyone here, present, and whoever might be viewing the meeting later, a very happy holiday season, Merry Christmas. We hope you enjoy the winter break with your children or grandchildren. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Schumaker to give an update on the Beverly Hills proposal and Ms. Carpenter.
Well, Ms. Carpenter and I have now opened, and we have received eight RFPs, or requests for proposals, and we're in the process of beginning the review of those. And we'll let you folks know later on this week where we are and send you a little update as to where we are on that. We are hoping that we don't have to go through a interview process or a presentation process, but we'll let you know. We'll try to pick about the top three is what we're going to work for. And then once we get that, then, you know, we'll let you see what the proposals are so you can look at those yourselves. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, now, we were wanting to send out... Are we going to get our chairman to sign a letter, or are you going to just send out the thank you notes?
I was just going to send out a thank you note from the committee and just say thank you, just to let them know that we received their RFPs and to make sure that they know that we are looking at them.
One of the things, I think you originally sent out 12 letters, and I think out of those 12, we got eight back, so I think we got...
Yeah, it was actually 11, but you're right. And all of these came from the solicitation that we made. We didn't get any inquiries or any requests for proposals from our newspaper flow. We did send out some letters to appeal to folks that had sent us information in the past and wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to participate in. I think eight is a really good representation. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Okay, I'll turn this over now to Deputy Superintendent Reimer.
Yes, on behalf of Dr. Chris Lauter, Superintendent and all administration, we want to wish everyone a very safe and wonderful holiday season. We also look forward to seeing you all next year.
Okay, board members, we'll move on to... Okay, we'll move on to the public speaker section. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Sign-up is available 30 minutes before the meeting begins, and we do have several speakers signed up for this evening. Speakers must sign up with a board clerk no later than normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting and must complete a contact information card including their name, group, applicable address, phone number, and the general education-related topic of their presentation to the board. There's additional information in the agenda regarding our policy on public speakers, and we will start in the order of the sign-ups that were received. So first, we invite Melanie White and her daughter Eleanor to the podium. Good evening. She'll help you turn it on there.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Melanie White. This is my daughter Eleanor White. She attends WR Odell Elementary School. We're here to speak about the facility rate increase for the Drama Kids After School enrichment program. I have emailed you guys ahead of time a few weeks ago, so I hope you guys read my email. This evening, I wear two hats. I come here before you not only as a mother to an extraordinary daughter, but also as a person of higher education who works in higher education. So I speak not only to the future of her being able to attend these programs, but my future students being able to attend these enrichment programs, which have been very beneficial for all their students. I guess I'm perplexed as to what the financial incentive and who will benefit from these increases. I don't see how, if this shuts down the programs, anything will benefit financially. I also wonder how this will hurt business in the future, because if you mistreat the enrichment programs currently at the children's school, you'll be dissuading any future beneficial programs from wanting to do business with you. And that would be a very bad idea for future engagement programs that are thinking about coming to Cabarrus County, and this would probably dissuade them from wanting to do business with us and not giving them an opportunity to be in those wonderful programs. On the poster over there, it says engaging minds and shaping futures. And I really think that we should think about, shouldn't we do all we can to allow our students to have those things, to engage their minds, to shape their futures? These programs after school, they're not just babysitting programs. She Goes to Kids Plus, that's a babysitting program. That's for me to be able to stay at work, continue teaching, doing what I do best. But for these programs, these are more than that. These are really wonderful programs. They're going to do such wonderful things for these students when they get to my level, when I finally get them, and they have to come to me and say, "I've never been to a play. I've never been to a choir performance." You know, some of these kids have not had any of these opportunities that my daughter is so lucky to benefit from. So I just hope that you will, you know, figure out a way to keep these programs open, because they do a lot for our students. They encourage other enrichment programs to want to come to our county. And I just hope that you will reconsider this notion to increase the programs, because it's not going to make you more money. It's going to make them all close down, and then they're going to lose money. So, do you want to say anything, Eleanor? No? Okay. Well, I told her it was optional if she wanted to speak, and I would speak for her. And I just hope that you will consider this, and I hope that you will keep these programs open for these students. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speakers are three people: Sophie Steiner, Alyssa Soul, and Jackson Hicks.
Hello, I'm Sophie Steiner. I'm from Cox Mill Elementary. I'm speaking on behalf of the Drama Kids After School Program. Drama Kids can never end. What we say is not pretend. Everything we say is true. Now it's all up to you. We are here to make things right. Drama Kids brings us light, so don't charge more than they can afford. When I started Drama Kids, it made Mondays my favorite day of the week. I love Drama Kids and I still do now, so please don't make Drama Kids and all the other clubs pay more. I've been doing Drama Kids for many years. And before Drama Kids, I did not know what I loved, but now I do. That's acting, and Drama Kids is perfect for me. We love Drama Kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Peretta.
Hi, I'm Laura Peretta, and that's a tough act to follow, especially emotionally. As we love our children too, we've offered our Lego enrichment program since 2013 to the children of Cabarrus County. We have had agreements and partnerships with the schools. Each year, we donate 10% of our sales. That's the registrations from each school. We've been blessed to have our program in 11 Cabarrus County schools over these years. We've donated tens of thousands of dollars and just under $5,000 just last year. So the notion that we have not paid into the system is not true, obviously. We look forward to seeing these students and enriching their lives. As Ms. White said, there's a bigger picture here. We cannot afford an estimated amount of $30,000 after tax, after expenses. We are a professional program. We're not just somebody who comes in and throws Legos there. We tie it to all the educational topics that they're talking about in school. They're learning more than just learning to build with Legos. We have plenty of athletes that are in our program, but we have some students that don't have the ability to have a team. We're their team. We offer classroom experiences, and we don't feel that the fees are fair. We will, it's not a threat, but we will have to take our programs from Cabarrus County. And it will shut down ours and other programs, and yes, we will have to be forced to move on. We will still offer our program to the children of Cabarrus County, but it will not be in their schools, where they're with their friends and at their school. We don't cost anything or a minimal amount. There's never been a study done to say that we do. We operate from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. in one classroom. We don't have wear and tear on the classrooms. I'm sure if you were a teacher or principal or you know one, if that ever was the case, they would ask us to leave. We've been, unless there's been a growth or a new school, in the same room operating. If you've ever worked with a child and Legos, they don't move. They don't have wear and tear. Maybe, yes, there's two or three children that go to the bathroom and use a squirt of soap and the paper towel, but we'd be more than happy to bring our own if that's what's keeping us from possibly having the opportunity to continue. I would like to ask you, the board tonight, to possibly, a notion of voting, to extend the temporary waiver so the children can finish out the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Young.
Hello, my name is Jason Young. I love Drama Kids. It teaches me how to learn and act with my body and words. And we have fun. We just don't just... We love to do Drama Kids. And doing Drama Kids is what I love. And I don't think you should do this. If you have the time to come to see Drama Kids, we would be more happier to see you for coming. We would have fun. We would listen. We would... We can sit down and have fun.
I'm Jason's grandmother. And when he came here to Cabarrus County, he was born in Japan, and he had a speech impediment, and he was at long school with Ms. Carolyn Carpenter at that time. He has moved on, and he's been an inspiration there at Cal A-Fur, and he has turned himself around. And he decided that he wanted to speak tonight, that once he came in the door, that he was going to speak. And with Drama Kids, he has opened up his heart, and he's opened up his mind, and he's a well-adjusted child at this time. Everybody knows Jason at Cal A-Fur. And we thank you, and we would like to see that these things go on with a fair facility fee. And we enjoy, and he enjoys, school every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Steve Alexander.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. Just want to acknowledge that there seems to be a lot of misinformation that's been produced about Policy 5030, the... produced about policy 50-30, the fees, donations, what we've done in the past. It's kind of like, when I was growing up, we played a whisper in the ear game. I would start up here with Ms. Abbott, and by the time whatever I told her got around Ms. Blackwell, it would be different. It just happens that way. So, I want to clear up a few things of this misinformation. We've never been against fees, never. What is a fee? The fee, according to definition 50-30 policy, is a fee. However, we have paid fees with the school. As Ms. Peretta has said, all the clubs have made at least a 10% donation, if not more, to the schools. So, we have not been given a free ride. It's been brought my attention that we were doing so well that I've been able to retire. And I have, have no, you know, don't need to work anymore because we're making money hand over fist. That's incorrect. I am currently employed with TIAA in Charlotte and happy, so I am continued to be employed. I have offered to show our tax information that we are provided with Drama Kids Incorporated, Drama Kids International, excuse me, if anybody wants to see how much we've made. And I can tell you that for four out of probably five years, it probably is in the negative. So, um, you know, it, there's just been a lot of misinformation. So, I would like tonight, $85, the board has said, okay, we're going to cut you 65% or 55% or whatever the percentage finally got to. Okay, but that, you're going to kill the program. You're not only going to kill Drama Kids, you're going to kill Bricks for Kids, Girls on the Run, EIEIO, whatever. All the programs are gone. They're going to be in private schools, they're going to be in charter schools, they're going to be in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, they're going to be in all the schools surrounding you except for Cabarrus County schools. Because can't afford to be, do business. Roger Ferguson said about TIAA, "We're not for profit, but we're not for loss." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Brenda Alexander.
Where the red is on the light, there you go. Okay. Hi, I am Brenda Alexander. I view myself as an educator first. I was a teacher in Cabarrus County Schools for 32 years. Teacher blood runs through my body. When I went to work and had on the Santa Claus earrings and the jingle bells, you can't take a teacher out of the classroom. Everything I do is because I'm an educator. When I retired, we wanted to continue making a difference for children and found Drama Kids, and was so impressed because of the fact that it supports the, the standard course of study. Those things are important to me. We're not just playing, we're not just dressing up and making up little plays. We specifically address ELA standards, standard course of study standards, and the speaking and listening categories. We also address the drama theater curriculum. So, we are curriculum-based. We're not just, the kids just think they're having fun, but we're really teaching them something. So, that's the best kind of teaching, when children learn while they think they're having fun. The main point that I want to make is that this isn't a meeting about, is Drama Kids a good program? Is Bricks for Kids, is it beneficial? That's not what this is about. This is about money. And there are other people who've said they believe in the program, but I want to discuss the money part because that's why we're here. And first of all, it was, it's been stated, we haven't paid a facility fee. Well, when we've had our performances for six years, we have paid very, very large amounts of facility fees at all of the high schools that we've always performed at, as was written. When I started Drama Kids, right after I retired, I met with principals, and it was a sta- it was a school-based decision. This was a site-based decision, and principals were wel- were welcoming our program in, and we made an agreement on the school level that we're going to come to your school, and the agreements varied. As an educator, as an educator, one size doesn't fit all. So, at some of our schools, we offered scholarships, some of our schools. We offered donations, but we always participated in giving back. But this, we were not doing this under the, under the radar. We did not just show up and sneak in and have our programs. It was agreed upon. But in August, you decided for everything to go through the commit, through the county, we're fine with that. Just take the four hours and let us pay four hours at a time, four hours in a month. We can do that. And we will, if you let us. Okay, thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Michaela Lemon. Hello?
Hi.
Turn this on.
Hi, my name is Michaela. I attend Drama Kids at Cox Mill Elementary School, and these are some reasons why I think that you should not raise the fee. It helps with self-confidence, and it's great for public speaking. The teachers are great, and they play lots of fun games. It doesn't interfere with school because it's after-school on Mondays, and it's a great place to meet new friends. We do a play at the end of the year. Last year, it was Stray Lums Got Talent, and it was lots of fun. Thank you for listening.
Well, we always do appreciate hearing from the students, so. Board members, we will move on to the consent agenda. And we have a number of things in there, policies, the normal budget, amendments. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve? Scrimsey made the motion. Do I have a second on consent?
I'll second that.
Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 7-0. We will now move down to the action agenda. The first one we have, that was, the policy was going to have a few revisions since last So, we have Ms. Reimer and Ms. Burns.
Yes, ma'am. Board member opportunity for development. I think we had a board member ask us to spell out NC, NSCBA, NCBSBA, as well as create a link, and we've done that.
Okay, board members, any questions on this policy with the revision? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, I'll take Mr. Walter. Is that Mr. Schumaker or Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Harrison.
Mr. Harrison on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 7-0. The next policy we have on second reading is the approval of the 50-30 community use of facilities policy. And just for the viewing audience, I want to point out that this is not, the po- the rates are not in the policy. This update to the policy actually grants an additional 10% discount to after-school So, we had, I guess we just had a rewording of Section B, was that what that was from last time?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and got that from our attorney, as well as the green on page four or five, under J, effective date.
Okay, just to be consistent language across policies.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and there was one final update. Mr. Walter noticed last night that Section J effective date had a hardcoded date, and we usually have the date at the end of the policy, so it just changed to a, that's effective the first day of the month following board approval. So, okay, any questions on this policy?
And you had said that the rate, that thi- this just put that 10% into this policy, correct?
Correct. The rates are determined by the finance department based on the evaluation of all the uses. And I think that the really question at play here was, when the current rates were set, these hour, hour and 15-minute uses till the people come in and out of the building were not included in the evaluation. So, Ms. Klutz has already advised us that, starting with the new school year, for July 1st, she will review the rate chart with all of the known uses. The challenge to change rates mid-year is that you have people who have already come. In fact, within, I'd say probably two hours of the first night we discussed this, I had a person contact me that they wanted to use a school for Girl Scouts, and they could not afford it for a Girl Scout meeting, so they found something else to use. But we have lots of people who come to us and say, "We want to use a certain space," and then realize that they just want to, you know, come in and use it. And, and we're not really a business incubator-type environment or whatever, so they've not been able to come in. So, we're trying to accommodate with this increase in discount on the policy, and then the rates will be reviewed with this use case for the beginning of the new school year when all the other groups, churches and so on, re-up their intent to use the facilities. So.
Well, one of the questions, and, and, and I just want to thank everyone that did, you know, we did get numerous emails, but one of the things that really concerned me, and I think it was mentioned by one of our speakers, it kept referring to us being more expensive than Charlotte Mecklenburg, and I don't feel like that, and I think you maybe addressed that. They were saying that we were charging $85, and then I saw $109, and, and they were saying that Charlotte Mecklenburg was only $25, and my understanding that Mecklenburg was $50, is that not correct?
Was 25 plus, there were some maintenance fees. Ms. Klutz researched and, and provided some of that information maybe a month back or so.
And, and that's why, I mean, and I, I just want to make sure, I mean, I don't think any of us are questioning the, 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 you know, that the programs are great programs, and we do want to make sure that, that, that they're, that, that, you know, the children have the opportunities for the programs. I mean, that's, 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 they're good programs. But we have to be fair to everyone, and that's what we're looking at, that we do that, and we have to make sure that that's done, and that's equitable for everybody, and that we, we don't want to take money that's going to be, that we need to use for paying teachers or for something we need to pay for equipment. Is that not correct? Because that's what it would amount to. Or am I seeing something that's not correct?
No, I mean, the, the money, and I will look at, if I can pull up an email here, how the money is divided. Let me see if I can find this pretty quickly here.
Because that's my, if I'm seeing something that's not, because, I mean, that's what I'm understanding, that we, we try to break even. That's what we're trying to do, to break even. That's the way it was explained to me. We want to break even on what we're charging, and if we don't, then we have to take that money from another pot. And that other pot is what we use to pay our teachers by books, to buy things. And that's what these companies are saying. We can't do this, and we're going to have to move because we can't do it. So, I mean, but I can't afford to take money that I'm going to have to pay teachers, or I'm going to have to buy books, or I'm going to have to do something to help these students either. So, I have to break even too. So, I mean, it's a, a bad situation, but I'm not going to take the money that, to offer a reading program for this child that, as the grandmother said, I've, I've seen this young man, and he has improved, and, but I don't want to take the money that, where if I have to get him a reading program or help him in another, I don't want to take money to do that.
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter, I just asked Ms. Klutz for a summary of the, how the facility fees are used. So, there are three areas of fees. The first one actually was not being charged to these groups, but the first is the reimbursement for having staff on the premises to open, close, and clean the building from the facility use. This is primarily for use outside of normal business hours, but our principals are able to charge organizations to pay a custodian during regular hours. It depends on how much they're diverting the custodian from doing the work that they are employed by the system and the taxpayers to do. The second area is designed to reimburse electric, water, sewer, utility-type areas, and that money stays with the central office and is applied towards utilities. The schools do not pay utility bills individually, but rather as a district. The third area is maintenance recovery. This area is intended to reimburse schools for the excess use of supplies that are in the school, for diversion, for example, if the custodian needs to come back in and empty trash cans and so on, and replacing, repairing assets. So, one of our speakers commented on wear and tear, and that's true. It may not happen exactly then, but the more furniture, equipment, anything, the more you use your faucet at home, there is wear and tear. So, and again, we have to be fair across, if we're charging nonprofits fees, we have to be fair to the for-profit groups as well, to say that, you know, if, if person A uses it on a different day of the week, and person B uses it on that Monday after school, they're both contributing to these recovery fees, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. So, to this email that we got earlier today from Kelly, it says that the principals are not forbidden from requiring the organization to pay a custodian during regular hours. So, I think, I guess what confuses me a little bit is the fact that originally, when this policy was not being followed, it was because that was not happening at that specific school. Is that right?
It wasn't about the custodian fees.
Well, I just mean the fees in general.
Yeah, fees in general.
So, you know, having this caveat in here that the principals can decide whether or not to charge, if they're having the Drama Kids or whatever it is during regular hours that the principal, or that the custodian is already there, I don't really understand why we would have to charge an extra fee to have a custodian.
They're not, that's what we're saying. They're not paying for-
But that's where part of the reimbursement goes. That was number one.
Yeah, if there, and, and what she's saying there is, we're not charging. In the case of the organizations, it is not the intent to charge for custodian, the last sentence. So, that's never been a part of this discussion.
Okay.
That she's just explaining where the money goes to, based on your question earlier.
All right.
So.
But it says they're not forbidden from requiring.
Correct. If, if there was an activity after school, let's say there was, I don't know what, some big activity that would really dirty a school.
Yeah, so our middle school and high schools employ custodians after hours, so after regular school hours. So, they may have a second shift custodian that's there scrubbing the floors or doing normal custodian duties, but if there's a church that comes in or a, a large organization, we're not going to use taxpayer dollars for that custodian to then service that church or that outside organization. And so, we would allow, we would expect the principal to charge that organization for the custodial use, for their cleanup and opening the school and closing the school, even though you have someone there in the evening, and that's why it's optional for the principal. If the, the organization gets in and out within their hours, they don't mess, they don't cause a mess, they don't cause a fuss, then they don't have to charge that. But that's the only optional fee that they have the authority over. But that's the only optional fee that they have the authority over. The principal can decide whether to charge the custodian or not during regular business hours, but they do not have the option of negotiating facility use fees at the site level like we understand have been done, but they do not have the authority to do that.
Okay.
And Kelly, I don't know if you just want to say, don't sit down yet because there has, I know, been some discussion with some of the directors of these programs about the gifts and kind. So as one example, we have a church that covers the majority of their fees by providing backpacks with, packed with school supplies every year. That's considered a gift and kind. And they collect those from their church and use that to offset their rental fees. The donations that several of the speakers talked about, those would be counted if it's a donation to the school. If it's a discounted fee, you really can't count that because that's a little bit arbitrary. It's not, it can't be determined to be distinct, but a donation. So I believe you had some conversations about how they could achieve gifts and kind.
Right. We did some brainstorming with some of the, the organizations about what they could do. Service projects, landscaping, lawn maintenance, painting. Our facilities have such needs, over $200 million worth of deferred maintenance. There's so much that these organizations could do for our school to offset those fees and we, our principals would just love it if they would do it and offset their fees for that and have their, their programs in our schools. Be a win-win, it really would.
So I guess then what you're saying is that if they offer to do some community service at the schools, then we could do something about the fees?
It's, it's, it's already in the policy. It's already there. It's an in-kind donation, so...
How do you calculate that though, Kelly?
Sorry?
How do you calculate that?
On the fee schedule, any hour worth of service will give you a $25 credit toward your facility use fee.
So $25 per person?
Which is pretty generous.
If you, yeah, if you have four people doing hours worth of service, there's your $100 right there.
That's $25 per person for an hour.
Per hour, yes. So if the three of us went and did something, did some landscaping for an hour, that's $75 right there toward the facility use fee. And so it's certainly a way to offset those costs.
And that has to be approved. You just can't come over and say, you want to do something.
Yeah, it has to be valuable.
Yeah, arranged.
To the, to the school and the principal, right?
Yeah.
A measurable value.
Yeah.
Has to be.
So I guess something that the groups could consider is, the parent groups could potentially do something just like it. Some of the schools, they've created nature trails and, like you said, landscape, different landscaping type things. So that's a possibility. So, I know from the sports, excuse me, just from the sports standpoint, that we often see that, where people, volunteers will take care of the grounds of a baseball field, for example, in exchange for being able to use it for a tournament on the weekend.
That was one of our previous facility use discussions and it was primarily around athletics and that was one of the, the largest reasons that we put the in-kind contribution in, because they work those fields and maintain them and plant grass and they do all of those things and, and we felt like we needed to give them an opportunity to apply that toward their rental and that's where that came from.
Mr. Otters, can you unkey please?
So Madam Chair, I'm assuming that the request for the temporary waiver would not be necessary because of the start date being the new school year?
I, I think that mention about the waiver was to continue this year without facilities' fees.
Right.
So, and that's...
The extension.
Huh?
The extension of it.
That's what, it runs out on 12/31.
Yeah, they want to do it for first semester.
You're not talking about the new school year being July, the new rate would start January 1?
No.
No?
Fiscal year.
Yeah, we're going to revert back to the current fee schedule on January the 1st, right? With the, if the board approves this policy with an additional 10%, then between now and July the 1st, I'll pull all the data again and evaluate our break even and see if there's anything with this new information that we can do.
So what is the negative if, if we extend it to the end of the year?
What is the negative? Financially, you're not breaking even. You're supplementing businesses.
Kate?
And I just want to ask Mr. Shaw. I think, I believe we would place ourselves at risk if we extend the waiver for a whole school year, from the standpoint of all the other groups who had wished to use the schools. They would now be coming back asking for the next five months or so of free, of no fees. And, and we would get ourselves in the pickle.
Yeah, I would have to look at those, all those different requests to see whether there's actual, an actual legal conflict or not, but it certainly creates an inequity at the very least if there's differential treatment. And we all know people can make claims. I'm in no position to evaluate those without knowing exactly what those are, but inequitable treatment generally leads to either legal claims or political claims.
So what have we been doing for the last four months?
The last four months was designed as a temporary basis with, with the recognition that something was being changed without much notice. And so let's try to buy some time and allow, there's going to be inequity one way or the other because people, the rules are being changed on people without being told. But on the other hand, the people were being treated unfairly. People who granted the waiver were being treated unfairly or advantageously compared to people who had not received the waiver. So either way you looked at it, there was an unfairness. The thought was, let's try to maintain the status quo for a limited period of time, evaluate it and then put it in a fair posture. There was a no-win situation. If some people, if we start the school year, some people being treated under the policy and some people being treated not under the policy, then how do we address that inequity? We decided to do it on a temporary basis, evaluate it and then try to equalize it after that evaluation.
Yeah. A key factor, back when we granted the waiver, was that we needed time for the policy committee, which you serve on, to review and see what the updates would be and how we can get our handle around not being aware of the situation that was discovered. And, and just for the public to kind of back up, this really started in mid-June when an inquiry was made to a board member regarding the use of athletic facilities at a high school. And when that was researched by Ms. Klutz, it was identified the forms were not completed correctly and the, the group was not paying the fee and that was the challenge from the citizen who, who inquired. So that started, then inquiring to other principals, do you have groups potentially who are not, have not completed the facilities use fee? And, and I think it's important to note, and Ms. Klutz, you can add to this, but the facilities use form and fee is not just about the money, it's about the insurance and the intent and the owner of, of who is using the facility.
The insurance and liability is, is huge and that, so that's another, I refer to all of these meetings that we have about every two or three years with facility use and NCASA brought to our attention that not only us, but most districts around the state five or six years ago, were not paying enough attention to the liability and the, the insurance concerns. And so they sent out a 30-page PowerPoint presentation and basically told us what we needed to make sure that we were doing. We adjusted the policy a little bit then, we adjusted, made some, you know, did some educational presentations to our principals and changed the way we were doing things, just very much for the liability and the insurance issues associated with it.
And in fairness, I, I do want to share that the groups filled out the forms, once this came to light in August, they didn't pay any fees, but they did provide, I think, their insurance certificates.
They did.
And filled out the forms, so we had the information on the, who was using the facility. Sometimes the rooms they were using isn't exactly accurate and that needs to get worked on too.
I would supplement my response to Mr. Walter by just saying that, once the administration identified the issue, the administration went to a, let's apply the policy as it's written, that is an equal standard for everybody. The problem was that the different schools had different interpretations and implementation of the policy. So the one approach would have been just go cold turkey, apply the policy, that's equal to everybody, but it's a, but it was an immediate change to some people just before the school started with, with different interpretations. What is fair in that situation is kind of in the mind of the beholder. I thought that the board made a very reasonable call to try to, let's maintain the status quo, not pull the plug without some time to think it over and send it to the policy committee for evaluation.
So the fees here that are in the form, they're on the form, is that right? And you, how often do those get changed or how often do you look at that?
I look at them about every two years because it's typically an issue about every two years. You know, something is brought to the board for whatever reason, there's usually a committee formed and, and we do this repetitively. So I'm going to say about every two years. There's not a, there's not a cycle.
But it doesn't come to the board to approve those fees, is that correct?
No, it's not a...
So it's not a board decision on what the fees are?
The policy is your decision, the, the fees are not.
Right, okay. That's, I just want to make that...
And that's why we have the opportunity to do the percent discount by approving this policy.
Again, I mean, my, my encouragement here is I'm not looking to make any money off these people. I do want to make costs. I mean, we do, do need to treat everybody evenly and we need to, to cover our costs, but we certainly shouldn't be making a profit off of these companies.
I promise you, we're not making money. I wish we were. If you gave me, I think we could legally, if you gave me the authority to, but that's never been our position. Our position has always been to break even.
And then you're telling us that these fees here are the break even fees for the school system?
When the data was pulled with the users that I, I was aware of and knew...
At the time you did that.
At the time that the data was pulled, that was the break even point.
But now we have additional folks that may be paying, so that may affect those revenues.
They're not paying yet. Possibly as of January 1st, they may be paying.
But you would need six months, you would need six months of data before you can look at the fees again, or?
No, I, I, I pretty much have the data now, but it takes, I mean, can you imagine? There's different meters on every building of every school, water usage, sewage usage, square footage usage.
Again, I'm not saying it's an easy job, I just, if we're getting additional revenue, we should probably look at our fees to make sure that we're...
And I have...
Just hitting our costs.
I've told Ms. Furtinbaugh that I would be happy to do that. As we discussed, it really doesn't make sense to change a fee in the middle of the school year when you already have users committed through the entire school year. They have the ability to submit a user form for an entire year. So we've already got forms through June of this year.
Realize that, but we've got other entities here that are, that are currently providing services to our kids that may not be able to do that because of the additional fees or additional fees that they will be paying at this point. And we, you know, again, the board doesn't have any approval of those fees, that's in your, that's in your court there.
So are you, are you telling me you want to supplement these businesses with taxpayer dollars?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying, I think maybe we should look at the fees if it's an ability that...
And she...
I mean, I, I would like you to have the opportunity to lower fees if they can be lower. That's what I'm trying to say.
And I will look at the fees and the structure and the new data that we have and if there's a possibility that we can adjust those, we will. But I'm not going to come to you with a recommendation of anything but break even.
That's all I'm asking for.
So Kelly, I'm sorry. Okay. And I, and you, I'm just missing it somewhere of, so if we're not going to ask them to do that in the middle of a school year or middle of their year contract, if they just signed it in August, but they may have a, a fee that starts in January, tell me where that cycle's in at.
So the folks that the board has been working with over the last five months have a waiver up until January, January 1. And January 1, they're going to have to start paying fees according to the board policy and the fee structure. So they're going to have to start paying for six months. I'll look at the fee structure with the new data during that six months and if there's an ability to lower an area and increase another area, then that would be effective July 1. I said, you're still not following me?
Somewhat. I, I guess I, I heard you say we weren't going to, you know, if they had already signed on for a year, how do we go back and restructure their contract?
If I may, I think I know what the difference is.
I think I do too.
So the, the groups who we gave the waiver to only signed until December 31st.
Okay, that's why I was...
Yeah, that's the difference.
Right, we have some churches, some gymnasiums, some, a lot of other users that have signed through June 30th. And so we already have their form, we already have them committed through June 30th on this fee structure.
I just want to say, this is a mess. And you know, the reason why is because if you, you know, I was on the board when we addressed this to begin with, so to go from there to here, and I'm thinking, what happened? You know, why was no one following the original policy? You know, I mean, I get it that that was, is the problem and they are not.
So let me just speak to that briefly. I did it once before in a work session. So the groups that have not been filling out or following the policy exactly have gone through our PTOs. And so our PTOs do not have to, when they use the facility, fill out a facility use form. So PTO may think this is a fundraiser, I may get 10%, I may get whatever, I don't know what the promise is. So since they've gone through the PTO, the principals or the assistant principals in charge may not have asked them to fill it out. So it wasn't done, hey, I'm just not going to follow the policy. It was the fact that these entities work directly with PTOs who in turn did not have to rent the facility and therefore...
So the PTOs do not have authority to do anything on our...
Correct.
So how did that get done?
So, well, be, because we had to, in our policy, with the help of our attorneys, make sure our PTOs understand they can't sublet, which is exactly the language we've recently put in here. However, they weren't aware, they, you know, they just said they're part of PTO. Principal and assistant principal felt like, yeah, this is part of our PTO. So that's kind of how it started years ago, as you've heard these people talk. So it wasn't intentionally not following the policy, it really wasn't even ignorance of the policy. It was a little caveat that happened where our, our groups were working through our PTO to be able to use the facility and that's kind of how it kind of got to this point.
And the PTOs are allowed to have vendors come on site for like one-time events. So they might have a festival.
Or a school event, yes, a full school-wide, where everyone, the difference is, everyone's involved, we're not charging kids, there's no profit. So those are, and it may be a fundraiser, but it's a fundraiser for the entire school at one time and all kids are eligible to participate. So those are the kind of things that the PTOs are eligible to participate in.
And that I would understand, because of course I was a PTO mom at one point in time too. We did many things, dances, brought in DJs, you know, those things I understand, but, you know, just like Drama for Kids and some of those seem to be standalone organizations, not something that would be PTO-oriented, you know, so that's why I'm kind of confused.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 50-30 as presented? Like I said, the only thing at stake really for these groups in there is the additional 10% discount.
So move.
Does second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, silence is affirmative, so...
I sit up.
Okay. So are we 7-0? I'm not seeing a lot of... Okay, thank you. Motion passes 7-0 for the policy.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a statement? I think it needs to be said that this is really for consistency. You know, I think that's a huge issue, you know, it's, as confused as I was about what was going on from past into now, this is more to be more consistent because evidently that was where we were lacking really big time. So, okay, thank you.
And that we don't have the ability to set the fees.
Can I also make a statement?
Yes.
This is, this has been probably, you know, my first like big thing to vote on and this has been really tough because it's very hard not knowing, or knowing that we can't change what the fees are. And at this point, obviously, we want to be able to offer the extra percentage discount on the 50-30 policy. So really, it's, it's very discouraging to, to me because what I see is the children being hurt the most out of this entire process because that's obviously what we care about the most is the kids, so it's difficult.
I, I am hoping that with some of the ideas shared on gifts and kinds tonight, that the parents who are present and the groups can determine something they might do as a team. a team to help offset some of the fees.
And if I may offer up, I would think that there's a lot of businesses out there that would offer sponsorships, you know, for these organizations as well. I'm not sure if they've ever attempted to do that route, but, you know, a lot of businesses get involved with school and, and children-related activities, so I think that would be a good option as well.
Yeah, I guess, keep in mind that this would be a business sponsoring a business.
Right.
So, I don't know how that would.
That sounds like a really good opportunity to me. I, I do that a lot, so, yes.
To sponsor another business?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. As opposed to just like a, a youth group or something? Ms. Carpenter?
Well, you know, that's how these ball teams, usually a parent has, has a child on the, the group or been involved, and that's how they normally, "Well, I'll go ahead and do, you know, give something." So, maybe some of these parents, they may have somebody that they paint or something like that, and that's where, you know, "Well, I can maybe paint something, and that could help them."
Madam Chair.
Because, again, we want the, you know, the children are the main, you know, that we don't want to see this happen, but, again, we're not setting the fees, and we don't want to see this go away. But, again, we've got to be fair to everyone, and that's, that's where we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, and we do have to be equitable to everyone.
Yeah, and I'd just like to, in, in summary, just make a note that, Ms. Cuts, we do appreciate you, these things are a lot of work. There's always, she is responsible for the department and the decisions that are made financially, and we have to trust that she's, her analysis, which literally squeezes every penny out of a rock, and Dr. Probst is acknowledging that. And actually, Dr. Probst, just while I'm thinking about it, before the meeting, we were having some dinner and chatting, and that the school system has two enterprises by statute. One is the school nutrition program, and one is Kids Plus. Both of those are basically businesses within the district, and they have to be self-sufficient from their fees through, the fees they charge families to the fees they have to pay back to the district. And I believe you said it was over $1 million a year that those programs pay back to the district from their revenues to use the space they use at the schools.
1.2.
1.2 million? Yeah. So, even, I'll say, in deference to ourselves as the district, by those two enterprises, we have to pay the fees as well, so. Mr. Harrison? So, okay, thank you. Board members will go to agenda item 9.03. Mr. Lauter, Mr. Taylor, come talk to us about HVAC.
Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to move forward with the J. and Fries Middle School and Mount Pleasant High School HVAC renovations.
Okay, board members, any questions after reviewing the materials?
Did you get that address changed?
Yes, Ms. Grimsley, I did.
Just to confirm, you have a contract here with a source well for a contract fee of 2 percent, so you think we're making a better savings than using this?
Yes, sir. Throughout all of the bid process and going through the pre-bid contract vehicles, we're definitely getting the best price this way.
Okay.
And a few weeks ago, you were alluding to how you're breaking up contracts into miniature type of contracts, or I forget the phrasing you used, but you're, you're segmenting some of the work out to different contractors. Has that process started yet?
Yes, sir. It begins with this approval tonight. Right now, we have it broken down, I believe, six phases, and we provided you with a copy of those phases as they are. Just know that they are going to be fluid.
I just wanted, I'm sorry, I just want to share that the commissioners were made aware of this intent. They seem to be appreciative of breaking it down, getting some of it started while you can, because everything seems to be going up in price and with the upcoming tariffs and all that, so.
Move approval.
Second. So, Mr. Walter made the motion for approval, Mrs. Grimsley made the second.
May I ask a question before?
Absolutely.
What, when do you think, if we approve this tonight, when do you think you'll be mobilizing, and what do you think's the end date for completion for this project?
We have an 11-week lead time on the equipment manufacturer, and then we are, and the reason that we're pushing so hard is to get in and get started at the beginning of March.
Okay, so you're looking at March something, mid-March at the latest, to begin the installation process?
Yes, sir. We're definitely trying to beat the heat next year.
Okay, thank you.
And this is in the current budget year, so these expenses won't be discussed in more detail for the budget discussion coming up in January, February, and March. I guess I'm asking, how will these expenses be recorded, maybe is the right phrase?
So, they're already appropriated, they're in our budget, and so if we don't complete the project by the end of the year, and that was one of the reasons, and another reason that we talked to the county about it, because we, we like to spend the money as quickly as we get it, but because of the bidding struggles and, and all of the issues that we're all dealing with right now, it may take us longer, it may take us 18 months or so.
Yes, ma'am.
Somewhere around there, and so we wanted them to be aware that we might have to carry over those funds, and they acknowledged and understood that need at this time.
So, they'll allow us accrue some of these funds?
Carry, I call, I call it carryover.
In the business world, we call it accruals.
You can call it accrual, accrual if you want.
Thank you.
Works for me.
Okay, any other questions, board members? We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 7-0. Go spend your money check. Next, we have agenda item 9.04, the Harrisburg-Greenway easement. Mr. Lauter?
Yes, ma'am. I think you've presented the agreement a couple of months ago, and then we talked about it last month at work session, and I think you had one concern was to make sure that the school board was going to be involved, or the school system would have an involvement in that, and we did get confirmation of that from Mr. Daniel Stein, directed by attorney Mr. Shaw, and he's, he's okay with the response we had, so it looks like we're on guard.
And, and I will share, I talked to Mr. Harrison because he lives in the Harrisburg area and would be the closest, if you will, for a meeting or going on-site or whatever, and he would be willing to join you all, whoever might be representing us from staff, so.
Thank you.
So, any questions, board members? Take a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Sheemaker, second?
No.
Harrison.
He wanted to get it over, he didn't want me to push him up. I'll push his button as well.
So, we have a motion by Mrs. Carpenter, a second by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I think that's a great partnership with the town of Harrisburg, so. Okay, that brings us to the end of our open session agenda. I'll take a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1183, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1186, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, change a grievance, charge a grievance by or against an individual public officer employee to review personnel recommendations.
I'll make the motion as you just stated it.
Second.
And that was Mr. Sheemaker that time?
Yep.
Motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Mr. Sheemaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 7-0, and we are now in closed session. Thank you all for joining us.